The September 13th, 2021 Regular Wasilla City Council Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away your cell phones. If you have personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move to a recess. Also, when speaking, please remember to state your name for those streaming the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so for the audience and those on the phone with us this evening, Mayor Glenda Ledford was unable to attend in person. Deputy Mayor Bernie is also unable to attend in person. So Mayor Ledford did ask Councilmember Vlach if she would chair this evening's meeting. So with no objection from the body, Councilmember Vlach is chairing our meeting. And I will call the roll. Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Bernie?
Yep.
Councilmember Vlach?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Rouse is absent and excused unless there's objection from the body. You do have a quorum, Madam Chair. Councilmembers Johnson, Bernie, and Harvey are participating telephonically with yourself, Councilmember Vlach, and Brown in person.
Okay, will Simon lead us in place of the legions?
..............................................................................
Okay, first item of business is approval of the agenda. Do we have?
We just have the one, would you like me to?
Sure.
Councilmembers, we do have one change this evening. Item number 6.4 under Commission and Agency Reports. We're going to strike that from the agenda this evening and push it to the next regular meeting. Matsu Health Foundation asked that we push their presentation to the next meeting. And so are there any other changes to tonight's agenda as presented? So hearing none?
Hearing, yeah. Hearing none. We, the agenda is approved. Okay. You have to bear with me here. Okay, next on the agenda is special orders of the day. And let's see. Is there a memorandum? It looks like right. Proclamation, okay. Okay, the mayor proclamation recognizing September as recovery month. City of Wasilla proclamation recognizing September's recovery month, whereas behavior health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas the focus of National Recovery Month is to increase awareness and understanding of mental and substance use disorders and celebrate the people who recover, and whereas Recovery Month spreads a message that behavioral health is essential to health and one's overall wellness, and that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people recover. And whereas the impact of mental and substance use disorders is apparent in our local community, and individuals in communities throughout our state have achieved and sustained long-term recovery through behavioral health treatment programs. And whereas through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental and substance use disorders, which can lead more people into needed treatment. Now therefore, I, Glenda D. Ledford, Mayor of City of Wasilla, hereby proclaim and recognize September 2021 as Recovery Month in Wasilla, and call upon our community to observe this month with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance dated this 13th day of September 2021. Okay, next is Commission and Agency Reports. Parks and Recreation Commission. Deputy Administrator Crystal, to please get the report.
The mayor and I both attended the Parks and Recs Commission out at the Menard Center, and it was pretty well attended. There was lots of conversation around some softball field needs that they're in discussion with. And moving forward, they're going to be bringing some of those solutions to you in the next, probably the next few months.
Is there any questions for Crystal? Okay, next is a report from Wasilla High School Student Representative.
Hi, my name is Quinlan Chaco. I'm a representative from Wasilla High School. We are thankful that we are in person with 850 students currently attending. Homecoming was a huge success. We had our first homecoming dance in two years. Football, volleyball, cross-country, swim and dive, and tennis are in full swing. Wasilla High School also won the National NC3 Start Award for our implementation of our new CTA programs to include Snap-on certifications, tarmac machining certifications, and Greenlee electrical certifications. Wasilla High School is currently working on developing a Capuda diesel program. Wasilla High School doubled our advanced placement numbers from last year. Thank you for your continued service to Wasilla, to the Wasilla community. Finally, we would like to invite you to Wasilla High School to see our school and programs. Exciting things are happening at Warrior Nation.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, Alaska Department of Health, okay, down. Okay, Alaska Department of Health and Social Services Medical Team COVID-19 update.
Hi, this is Dr. Ann Zink. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much. I so wish I was there in person as a fellow member of the Matsu community. And I am sorry that I'm in Anchorage right now, trying to do some other work as well. So anyway, it's great to be here. I did receive some questions beforehand, and I'm happy to go through those or just kind of an overview of where we're at, but I want to make sure this is as useful as possible for the committee members' time in as many ways as possible. So just for a brief overview, and I do have some slides, but I can't really share via telephone, but happy to share with the council via email, and you can share with the community as a whole. We continue to experience a significant surge in COVID-19 cases. This is primarily driven by the Delta variant, which transmits between people much more easily. So before, with the original Wuhan variant, one person could spread it to one or two, two and a half other people, but with the Delta variant, we're seeing one person can easily spread it to somewhere between five to eight people. We continue to see that vaccines work well against hospitalization as well as death, but despite that, we see a lot of cases, and our hospitalizations continue to be stretched. Looking specifically at today, we have about, let's see here, 567 cases per 100,000 across the state overall. We have currently in our hospitals about 21.3% of our patients that are hospitalized because of COVID-19 across the state. Our testing positivity has increased to 9.2%, and we continue to see testing limitations throughout the state, particularly in the Matsu Valley, and continue to hope for local providers to speed up the testing and try to make sure that people don't have to wait long lines as well, get those testing results back as quickly as possible. Across the state, 61.5% of those 12 and above have received a COVID-19 vaccination, at least one shot. Specifically focusing in on the Matsu, we had could be two new cases as of yesterday, and have had just under 15,000 cases total in the Matsu Valley. The Matsu is running slightly higher in a percent positivity at 9.25%, and we see a variety of areas with different vaccine rates. Matsu is running lower than the state as a whole for its vaccine rate. We have 44.7% of residents 12 and above have received at least one dose. We see some communities such as kind of the Groy area is actually a higher with 53.5% have received at least one dose. And currently, our data from the Big Lake Houston area shows much lower, as well as 4.8% of the population has received at least one dose. We do have some limitations in our data, particularly in the larger Wasilla area, secondary CO boxes that we continue to struggle through, but in general, the Matsu numbers incorporate those CO boxes in where people live. Matsu Hospital, as we know, is our one hospital in the region, has been stretched quite thin with COVID-positive patients recently, having more COVID-positive patients now than at any other point in the pandemic. Looking at the current tracking board, every ICU bed in Matsu is full, with 36 patients hospitalized because of COVID-19, including 10 patients on event, and approximately 40% of all patients in Matsu's hospital right now are COVID-positive at this time. So for those reasons, we continue to do what we can to encourage people to consider getting vaccinated. The state is encouraging, and the governor is encouraging people to get vaccinated against COVID-19. The reason is, is because even though the vaccine is not perfect, it does not prevent all cases, it does not prevent all hospitalizations and deaths, it does an amazing job at minimizing those chances. So if you're vaccinated against COVID-19, you're less likely to get COVID, you're less likely to transmit it to other people, you're less likely to be hospitalized, and you're less likely to die from the disease overall. And it's the safest way to get a degree of immunity. We do see protection from people who have had previous infection, however, that comes at much greater cost with the risk of hospitalization and death being much greater. And there are studies looking at both ages, population, as well as different vaccine types, and happy to share any of that information. The other thing that I would say is that we have one fully approved FDA vaccine at this time, the Pfizer is fully approved for those 16 and above, and under the emergency use authorization, there are three vaccines that go down to the age of 12. We also try to do what we can to support hospitals in their capacity, including putting an additional resource request for staffing to increase the staffing capacity, look at transferring capacity and capabilities to transfer patients around the state to minimize the burden on any one hospital. But increasingly, we are seeing a change in the standard of care that's being offered at hospitals secondary to the limited capacity overall. So that's just a brief overview of where we're at with COVID-19, but happy to take any questions from the mayor, the council, overall, and appreciate the time.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Zink. So can you tell us, is the vaccine safe? How effective is it? And how does it compare to other vaccines?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So the FDA is probably the most rigorous body in the world looking at any medication or any vaccine before it is put out for public use. It used to be that you got full authorization before anything was used. An emergency use authorization process was started actually during the HIV pandemic, where there was an emergent need to get treatment out urgently, given the nature of the situation. The vaccines that are currently out are all approved under the FDA, but two of them are under an emergency use authorization, and one is under a full authorization. And the difference between a full authorization and emergency use authorization has some degree to do with liability protection. So both of them do come with federal government protection to be able to use them. But the big difference is that with a full authorization, that drug, that vaccine can start to market itself directly to patients, get a brand name, and be able to be out there in the market and do its own, and you can also use it off-label. So those are the kind of differences between a full FDA approval. The vaccines don't get approved by the FDA if they are not found to be more safe than getting the virus itself, and if they are not found to be efficacious. So all three of these vaccines are much, much safer than getting COVID-19 from a population standpoint. There will always be examples of people who, you know, got COVID-19, had very minimal side effects, and there have been examples of people who have been vaccinated and have had significant side effects. But when we look at the population as a whole, it is much, much safer to get vaccinated than to get COVID-19 without being vaccinated. And right now with Delta, we are all going to be exposed to COVID in one way or the other if we're interacting with other people. It's just so transmissible. Regarding the efficacy, these vaccines were designed to keep you out of the hospital and to keep you from dying from the disease. They don't work as well against all disease, and we are seeing some decreased efficacy with the Delta variant. So initially, with the two mRNA vaccines, we saw about a 95% protection against any symptomatic disease, and it looks like that's dropped into the mid-80s with the Delta variant. And then to your last bit of the question, these are much more efficacious vaccines than we see compared to many other vaccine types. So for example, influenza vaccine, it still saves lives every year, even when it's somewhere between 40 to 60% efficacious. So much more efficacious than the flu vaccine as a whole. So it's important to note that even though we see breakthrough cases, and we do see people unfortunately who are hospitalized and can't die despite vaccination, they tend to be much older, they tend to be much sicker, and if the population as a whole, these are incredibly safe and incredibly effective at minimizing the impact of COVID-19 so that we can have more homecoming parties, just as the Wasilla member just described, more gatherings, and honestly put COVID-19 behind us. And what we see in highly vaccinated communities is they, their hospitals are not being overwhelmed, and they are able to go about most of their normal daily experiences without seeing the scourge of COVID-19 on the community in the same way.
Thank you. Another question, is it true that masks don't work as well against the Delta variant?
Yes, another great question. Masks are not perfect. They do a really good job at slowing the spread of COVID-19, and even an imperfect tool can be very effective. I sometimes think of it like seatbelts. We still see people who get injured in a car accident, even though they're seatbelted, but it can slow the impact of them, and so they aren't as injured by the car itself. And the same is true with both vaccines and masking, even in a setting of Delta. So masks still provide a significant barrier of protection from people spreading it to each other, as well as you being able to inhale it. It depends on the fit, it depends on the number of layers, it also depends on the overall exposure. So someone coughed right in your face, that is going to be less protection than if people are six feet apart and both wearing well-fitting face masks. So we continue to see masking as a very important and effective tool, particularly in this time of a lot of COVID transmission. I don't think masks are going to be with us forever. They may be existent within places like the healthcare industry, you know, we didn't wear gloves before HIV, and now we do. But while we have a lot of COVID spreading, I think of it like snow tires on the car, we take extra precautions when the conditions are bad. And right now, the COVID conditions are bad, and so asking everyone to do what they can to take COVID precautions, including masks when indoors spaces with others.
Thank you. What is the current state of hospital capacity in Anchorage, the valley, and the state as a whole?
It's incredibly limited. I have been practicing at Matsu for 12 years. I've never seen anything like this in my career. It's heartbreaking to know that you could be able to provide care for a patient but are unable to provide it because there is not a bed to be able to care for that patient and the staff to go with it. And this isn't just COVID patients. This is strokes, heart attacks, you know, dirt bike accidents, appendicitis, things that normally would not be a big deal to be able to care for. Anchorage has been beyond capacity to care for particularly ICU dialysis patients for a couple weeks now. They have been on what they call ED divert, greater than 90% of the time for the last two weeks, because they've been unable to accept patients in for transferring. Matsu, as a result, for multiple weeks, worked as obviously a transfer center in. Again, in my time there, I have never accepted patients from Dutch Harbor, from Bethel, from Kodiak. But because Anchorage couldn't accept patients, Fairbanks, Central Penn, Matsu, were working to accept patients. But just as the tide rises and all of the rocks become covered, the rising tide of patients has made it so there is really almost no availability. I was on the phone today with Fairbanks, and they have negative four ICU beds that are caring for patients outside of the ICU. They're switching their cafeteria over to be able to care for patients in the state. This has been amplified by the fact that other tier-shelf places of sending patients like Anchorage, excuse me, Seattle and Portland are no longer sites that we can send patients to because they are also incredibly overwhelmed. On top of that, we normally rely on travel nursing and nursing that moves throughout the Lower 48 to come up and help at different times in Alaska, and everyone is in short supply of staff right now, and so that has become increasingly limited in its capacity. As a result, we've had to stretch nursing capacity, so one nurse might be able to care for two patients safely in an ICU, and maybe being able to care for three or four patients at this time simply due to the number of staffing and availability. It is also resulting in significantly prolonged ability to transfer patients. You know, pediatric, ortho case, a femur fracture, something like that, may take a lot longer to find a bed because finding the right services with the right skill set can sometimes at this point take days, which is impacting the overall care of all patients within the state of Alaska and honestly the country right now.
Wow. Is testing still important? And what is antigen testing, and how can it help combat the spread of COVID?
Yeah, great question. Testing is super important still. I think of it a little bit like the lights on my car. It helps us to see where you're going and helps individuals to make individual action. You know, Mayor, I'm sorry to hear that you're not feeling well and you have allergies. You know, testing can be a really great tool to identify if you've got allergies or if you have COVID. It's a way to quickly be able to identify a disease that can be very hard to identify what it is simply based on symptoms alone. 50% of people who get COVID never develop a fever. Some people develop only GI symptoms, so nausea, vomiting, diarrhea. Some people only develop neurologic symptoms. So it can be very hard to tell just based on symptoms alone if someone has COVID-19 or not. If someone has COVID, because it's so transmissible and because it can impact so many people, that's the reason we ask you to isolate, to stay away from others while you're recovering from that disease, really for kind of that 10 days. It can also make a difference in your treatment. So if you get diagnosed with COVID-19 and you're an otherwise at-risk person, and that could just include high blood pressure, obesity, and you're over the age of 12, you would qualify for monoclonal antibodies for treatment. And monoclonal antibodies are manufactured antibodies that can be used both in vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals, and minimize your risk of needing hospitalization. But they work best early on in the disease course. So identifying that you have COVID-19 not only helps to keep you from spreading it to others, helps you to notify your contacts, but it also helps to know if you would benefit from treatment options such as monoclonal antibodies to minimize your risk for hospitalization. And we really encourage people not to wait until they're really sick before they think they need it, because at that point, they don't work well. They work early on in the treatment. And there's both at-home as well as urgent care deliveries in the Matsu Valley, and you're always welcome to call our call line, which is open seven days a week, which is 646-3322, to help identify where you can get monoclonal antibodies. And so to explain all of those reasons, testing is important. Testing has been very limited in the valley recently. I know the lines at Capstone have been long. Some of the clinics are doing additional testing, they're working with Capstone and others to try to speed up that testing. And there's also at-home testing that people can access. Someone that access to testing is antigen testing, and that was the second part of your question. I would emphasize that antigen is different than antibody testing. So antigen testing looks for a protein associated with the virus that causes COVID-19, and can rapidly identify if you're actively infected with COVID-19. So antigen testing is the type of testing that makes up a lot of the rapid at-home testing, like the By Next Now cards. It looks for that piece of virus, that protein associated with that virus, to see if that's truly what you have. Antigen testing is a little bit less sensitive, let's say PCR or molecular testing, but it can be a very useful, fast way to be able to identify if someone is positive. We use antigen testing for lots of other diseases like flu testing, even the lateral assay flows that are, if you make up a whole pregnancy test, are antigen testing as well. So it's a commonplace practice in medical practice. Antibody testing looks to see if you have one of the series of antibodies, either from vaccination or from previous infection. And the main use of antibody testing is in some clinical work to determine if someone had a blood clot, they had a stroke, they had a heart attack, and they are beyond kind of the viral window to understand if that would have been the case. They can be useful at a population level to understand how much of the population has been exposed to COVID-19, because we do see natural infection or infection immunity secondary to previous infection can provide some significant protection. It appears to vary depending on the person, the age, the length of time. We also know that it comes at significant risk with the risk of, you know, getting quite sicker than vaccine-induced protection. And it's important that the type of antibody test is appropriate for what you're looking for. So there are antibody tests for the antibodies specifically related to vaccine, there's antibodies that come up more quickly, like IgM antibodies, and longer antibodies like IgG antibodies. So to determine if you're actively sick from COVID-19, antibody testing is not useful, but antigen testing, molecular testing, or PCR testing can be quite useful. I hope that answers the question.
Yes, it did. Thanks for the clarification, because I learned something there. Another question, how are Delta variant cases determined during testing?
Yeah, so another great question. Delta variant cases, Delta is one of the variants that we see within COVID-19, and it revolves sequencing. Sequencing takes a minimum of four days on the machine to run. It's not a fast thing that happens. You have to actually look at the entire genomic structure, and it is not really a lab intensive, but it's also very time-intensive testing. It also doesn't come back in very quick time, as I mentioned. You know, it takes at least four days from once it starts on the machine to come back. And so it's used at a population level, and there is an individual level basis to understand how is this virus changing, where is it at, what does this look like? Our state lab does do surveillance testing, and they do sequence testing to be able to understand how this disease is changing, what the virus looks like. But it does not come back on a population level. So if you go to, you know, Capstone, you get tested, it's not going to come back as Delta or Alpha, because that would take weeks to come back, and we're not doing all the cases. We just don't have the time, money, and it's really honestly not useful to do every case. But what we do do is we put out a weekly report of when we're doing surveillance sequencing across the state, what are we seeing? And 99-plus percent of all the cases that we're testing right now are Delta variant. So we've had a couple cases, like this week's report, we had 278 cases of Delta that we sequenced. We had one that sequenced positive for Alpha and one that sequenced positive for Mu. So the vast majority of everything that we're sequencing right now is Delta. But it helps us to see that we got hit by Delta a little bit later than the Lower 48. There are some changes within Delta that we can see over time, and helps us to understand the transmission. But in general, right now in Alaska, if you test positive for COVID-19, the chances are that it is a Delta variant case, and encourage people to take a look at a weekly summary if you want to follow along with us at watching the genomic sequencing of the virus.
Thank you, Dr. Zink. Madam Mayor, you have a question for Dr. Zink?
Yes, I do. What do you know about the booster that Pfizer has come out with?
Yeah, so thank you so much for that question, Mayor. A couple different things about the booster. Looking at immunocompromised patients, people who have, you know, solid organ transplant, HIV, on significantly immunosuppressive medications, for their natural immune system to develop a robust response with the vaccine, they really need three shots. So currently with Pfizer, it is recommended that people get three shots of the vaccine, each four weeks apart, if they are immunocompromised. And that is current and standing now. You don't need a doctor's note, you just need to attest that you're immunocompromised, but we always encourage you to talk to your primary care provider, your doctor, or pharmacist if you've got any questions, if that makes sense for you. Separate from that, we do see waning immunity, immunity that does not appear to be lasting as long, particularly while there's so much COVID circulating. Because who gets sick from COVID is really determined on two things. How well your body responds to that, how well was it taught from the vaccine, had you seen it before, your overall immune system in general, as well as how much COVID is circulating. So with so much COVID circulating worldwide, we see some degree of lowering immunity over time, particularly in people who are regularly exposed, like healthcare workers and those who are older. We are currently awaiting the FDA and the CDC to review the current scanning data to see if they recommend a third dose as a booster dose, given waning immunity like we've seen in other countries. The White House did come out and message that this would happen September 20th. However, that data has not been approved by the FDA or the CDC at this time, and that was really operational planning. So we as a state are stood up with vaccine and vaccinators, ready to give people a third dose, booster dose, if the data suggests that it's needed, but we're still waiting on that data at this time. And as soon as we have more information of that, we'll share. So this time, the only people for three shots are those who are immunocompromised, but we stand by and ready if an additional shot is needed. I will also say this is not uncommon for vaccines to need potentially three shots to develop a stronger immune response. And how long this will last, as well as how long immunity from previous infection lasts, really we'll know over time as we continue to follow the virus and the vaccine over time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Dr. Zink? Simon?
Counselor Brown, with the information you just gave, and with the trends we see in the Lower 48, do you have any additional recommendations to the city and to the borough governments on additional things we can do above what's happening right now?
Thank you, Counselor Brown. This is a hard place in the pandemic, honestly. This is a hard place in the pandemic, honestly, from where we're at. I think we are all done with COVID. I'm done with COVID. We do not want to take any additional mitigation efforts, yet we're seeing record-breaking cases, not only in Alaska as well as the lower 48, and our hospital systems stretched like they've never been before. We, from DHSS's perspective, our mission is to promote the health and well-being of Alaskans. So we will always continue to promote the health and well-being, if that's COVID, if that's syphilis, if that's, you know, car accidents, whatever that is. But from a state perspective, and then this is really where it gets into municipalities, when we start to see systems failing, we'll ask more people in the public as a whole to step into the space. And right now, we are starting to see our healthcare system frankly fail under the weight of the number of patients that we're seeing. We are also starting to see, honestly, schools to some degree. It is much more challenging to have in-person schooling and to have the number of professors and teachers and support staff that we need to be able to have in-person school, which is critical for our children's development when we have a lot of COVID spreading. And so everything that municipalities can do to encourage mitigation efforts is greatly appreciated. And so that includes vaccination, and we're always happy to partner with you on offering vaccine events. We have a speakers bureau that can help to answer questions to any group or any population about, you know, questions they have, because there's great questions about vaccines, and we want to make sure every Alaskan has access to any information that would make them feel comfortable about the decision to get vaccinated. We also would encourage masking in indoor spaces. And so the more that we can do to have masks on when we are in indoor spaces with others, that will help to slow the spread. Then increasing testing and then encouraging people to get monoclonal antibody treatment early on. So I appreciate the question. Anything and everything that we all collectively can do, as you all are the legislative editors of an amazing community of Wasilla, and anything you can do to help us along these efforts and help to keep our systems in place, particularly our healthcare system and our school system.
Thank you, Dr. Zink. Any other questions from the council?
Yes, this is Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
This is Councilman Johnson. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, sir.
Okay, very good. Dr. Zink, in, I think, August 24th of this year, a report was written by a doctor, Jennifer Griffin, that reported the Los Angeles hospital systems was reporting that fully vaccinated persons were actually being hospitalized at a rate of 3.2% of the people who were hospitalized for COVID-2. Are you keeping similar statistics to the LA studies? And what is our ratio of hospitalized people that are vaccinated versus those who are unvaccinated? Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that question, Councilman Johnson. So we have been following this. We follow it both on a weekly and a monthly, as well as a cumulative basis. We do put out monthly reports on hospitalization and vaccine breakthrough and include that information. And in our weekly summary, we summarize to date for this year, percentage of patients who have been vaccinated, who either are cases or have been hospitalized. In general, just under 90% of all of our hospitalizations and deaths, I believe it's, I'd have to pull up the actual report from today, but I believe it was 89% of all of our deaths, 88% of all of our hospitalizations, and I believe 84% of all of our cases since January 1st have been unvaccinated individuals. What we have seen over time, particularly moving into July, as there's been more Delta, more people have been vaccinated, but we're also seeing just more pressure on that vaccine, as well as likely some degree of waning immunity. We have seen an increase in cases of both hospitalization and death, as well as COVID cases associated with vaccinated individuals. So our July report showed that approximately 30% of our cases were vaccinated individuals, 70% were unvaccinated individuals, and about 18% of our hospitalizations were vaccinated individuals versus just over 80%, 82% were unvaccinated individuals. I think the one thing that doesn't come out super clear in just those numbers alone is the age difference. So when you look at our July data, the average vaccinated person was 14 years older than our average unvaccinated individual. And looking at our August data, that looks to be even more so. So looking at one hospital system just this past week, their average vaccinated individual was 66 versus their average unvaccinated individual was 44. So clinically, for myself, worked in the emergency department, saw a whole bunch of COVID patients recently, I admitted two. One was vaccinated, one was unvaccinated. The vaccinated individual was in their 80s, chronically in oxygen with multiple comorbidities, and the unvaccinated person was an otherwise healthy mid-40s person who was quite sick from the disease. So even though my ratio on that shift was 50%, and even though our ratio of the state overall is about 85% of our patients being hospitalized are unvaccinated, the people who are being hospitalized who are unvaccinated are much younger and otherwise healthier than those who are vaccinated, because someone who is older, the vaccine just isn't quite enough to protect them from COVID-19. Versus someone who is younger, the vaccine is an amazing protection, and unvaccinated, they can become quite sick and susceptible to this disease. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. If I may, I have a second question to come up on that one. If we're looking at your statistical page on your dashboard, we see the rise, the dramatic rise in COVID-19 patients who are being hospitalized. And yet, if we go to the death tab, we actually see that the spike of it actually appeared quite early on in probably April and May, and our death rate has actually been flat or slightly declining even through this current spike in hospitalization cases. Can you comment on that for me, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate that question. There's so much of the background data that becomes really challenging this job to always explain on the dashboard. I really appreciate these questions. So really early on in the pandemic, you know, hospitals would call us and say, we had this death, you know, they tested positive for COVID-19, we think that's the case, and so it was much easier to report in real time. But what's happening now is clinicians make the best judgment of what the cause of death would be, COVID or not, and it just goes through the normal process. And basically, what happens is the funeral home then submits it after the clinician did it, and then it gets submitted to our death certificate review process in our Haver's Department. The cyber attack also affected this. And so the entire process for death review is back to its multiple month-long time before things oftentimes get reported to us. The sales come faster, because a hospital may report them in a little bit sooner, but a combination of the cyber attack as well as just the normal processing, you know, for other diseases like flu, we're just about to put out a flu report for the last year. It takes us a couple months to go through all the data, make sure that the year is closed out, make sure we haven't missed any data. And so real-time reporting on death data particularly can take a while. Also, if clinicians have additional questions, or sometimes just they want additional information before they're willing to fill out a death certificate, that can take some time as well. So we do see that deaths in general are significantly delayed compared to particularly cases and to some degree hospitalizations in our dashboard data.
Thank you, Dr. Zink. I have no further questions.
Does council have any other questions? Council members on the line? Okay. Next, we will go to public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening, so we will move to persons to be heard. No persons to be heard this evening? Yes, I do want to thank Dr. Zink for participating tonight. That was very informative. I know I learned a lot, and we can all be doing our part out there. Thank you, Dr. Zink.
I really appreciate the time and always happy to come back if there's anything else that we can ever provide. You guys are in a challenging situation and some challenging times, and appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have no persons to be heard this evening. And Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Items for approval under our consent agenda this evening are the regular meeting minutes of August 23rd, 2021. We have no introductions and no resolutions for approval. We do have three action memorandums. The first is AM number 2140. That's award of a five-year contract to Rave Mobile Safety in the amount of $172,805 for Rave 911 suite licensing. Second is AM number 2141, contract award to Bold Planning in the amount of $24,920 for the acquisition of software to update the City of Wasilla Emergency Operations Plan. And lastly, AM number 2142, approving the city council regular meeting schedule for calendar year 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Chair, Councilman Brown, I move that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Councilmember Bernie, second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember Bernie to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Unfinished business, there is no unfinished business this evening. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the next item of business.
Thank you. That's new business item 10.1, update from administration on emergency response efforts related to COVID-19.
Okay, the mayor has issued a new directive and asked for a motion and second to enter the committee of the whole.
Councilman Brown, I move to the committee of the whole.
It has been moved by Councilmember Brown. Do we have a second?
Second by Johnson.
So seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. So ask the mayor, if the Madam Mayor's there, to give an update.
Yes, we went back to the mandate that was issued in, and Madam Clerk, help me out here, I think it was in April. The biggest thing was, we are with, right now, it's the mask that in all of our city buildings. We are highly, highly recommending, if not mandating, a mask in the city buildings. Other than that, nothing has changed. And people want to know about what the city's going to do as far as mandating vaccines since the president came out with his directive. And until it becomes law, there's no way that I would ever mandate anybody take a vaccine. Any questions?
Yeah, this is Councilman Johnson. I'm a little bit confused, are we mandating masks or are we just making it highly recommended?
We are, to the directive on April, it was mandating masks in the city buildings.
Madam Mayor, if I may, this is the city clerk. I think the verbiage we use is "they are required" at this point in time.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We just went back to the, I think it was the mandate that was issued in April. Was that it, Madam Clerk?
I do believe the first preparedness plan came out perhaps in March.
I'm sorry?
In the spring, ma'am, yes, that directive.
Yeah, it was sometime in the spring, and I'm not for sure what the month is.
Councilman Brown, a question.
Yes, sir.
I agree with your thing of not making the vaccine mandated until it becomes law, but is there any influence we can have with the borough when it come to masks? Because as you heard from the doctor, almost every hospital in Alaska and the West Coast is completely filled up, and the numbers in the Mattsu Valley is low comparatively to other locations, and the Delta is spreading widely. Do we have any kind of influence we can have with the borough to make masks mandated wider than just city buildings?
You know, let's say Thursday, we have a manager's and mayor's meeting, and the only thing that I can do is to strongly suggest that the borough take a look at their mandates again. We got no power outside the city limits.
Is there any other questions?
This is Councilman Johnson. I'm looking at the dashboard right now, both hospitalizations and our current members of counts. And is what I actually see from the Alaska website is we're probably on a declining basis of number of counts. I mean, if you look at the data, it's pretty plain. So I see that we're going back to a mandate, but I would really like to see us put some sort of a timeline or a trigger point where the masks drop again. I would say 30 days, okay, something like that, unless, of course, the data curves otherwise.
Well, the last time we had a mask mandate, it was because of the numbers spiking again, just like it has this time, and they're higher this time than they were last time. And so you watch your numbers. And when they get down to what the staff and the administration feels like is a safe number to be able to operate safely in the buildings and protect not only the staff but our citizens, then it's when we make a decision to not wear the mask.
Councilman Brown, and I agree with you, Madam Mayor. Numbers change constantly and stuff, and I think we have a staff who is constantly watching this, and I would hate to put a date on this, and the very next day that the numbers go up again. So I suggest that we leave it to the administration to bring recommendations back to us when her staff has done the analysis and figured it's safe to make the next move, but leave it in place until that.
Any other questions? Council, Crystal?
I just wanted to add that we are meeting every Tuesday with DHSS. We're meeting with the Mattsu COVID team, and we're also meeting with National. So that's three hours a week that we're in conversation. I write up the report and I make sure that the administration is aware on all levels of what's going on.
Thank you, Crystal. Any other questions for Madam Mayor? Okay, is there a motion to exit the committee of the whole?
Councilman Brown, I move we exit.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Bernie, second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember Bernie to exit the committee of the whole. Is there an objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Communications, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the item under communications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have just one item. It's IM number 2110, and that's the City of Wasilla's 2022 holiday schedule.
Are there any questions from the council? Are there any questions from the council? Hearing no questions. Next on the agenda is audience comments. And not seen any one who wants to speak. So next on the agenda is mayor, clerk, attorney, and council comments. And unless objection is raised, please keep your remarks limited to three minutes. So, how about Mayor, Madam Mayor? Any comments?
Yes, Nikki, first of all, thank you so much for stepping in at the last minute. I do have seasonal allergies. I have them every year. And some of them that have served on council and stuff with me before can remember when I get to where I can squeak. They all have a moment of solace. So that's what I have, but I did get a COVID test to make sure that that's what I have. And the results will be back in the morning, tonight or in the morning. So anyway, thank you all for a good meeting. And again, Nikki, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. I hope you start feeling better soon.
Oh, me too.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, do you have any comments?
Thank you. Madam Chair, just, we'll see you all here for our next regular meeting, which is September 27th. Early in-person voting starts on Monday, the 20th, so next Monday. If you're interested in early voting in our upcoming city election, we'll be open here at City Hall, weekdays from 9 to 5, and then Saturdays from 10 to 3. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. But thank you, and you did a great job. Madam Deputy Administrator, I believe next Monday is the Chartered Freedom Celebration in Wasilla. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Brown. We are going to have a celebration, and I think what's to be noted here is we were, the City of Wasilla is one of 11 cities in the nation that were chosen to have this as part of our community, and there's going to be six cannons that are shot off in celebration of our independence. And so we invite the public, and Councilmember Brown is going to emcee that, so you won't want to miss it.
Thank you. Okay, our city attorney, Holly Wells, any comments?
Tonight, no class tonight. Classes out.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank the city clerk and her staff for putting up the petitions again, and all the things they are doing to try to make us safe, so thank you very much.
Miss, Councilmember Bernie, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments tonight, thanks. Thank you for stepping in, Nikki.
Yes, Tim, this is for you, you know.
I know, I apologize.
Councilmember Harvey, any comments?
No comments this evening.
Okay, I guess me. Who else is on there? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilmember Johnson. Do you have any comments tonight?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Simon on being promoted to Brigadier General last week. And I just wanted to thank everyone for bearing with me tonight. And I guess that's all. Okay, meeting is adjourned at 6:54 PM.